Hi, good morning, Mr. Manager.
Good morning, sir.
Are you ready?
We are. We're gonna race here. We're gonna try to get this meeting done in an hour, but we have three things we're gonna go through. First, I'd like to take you on a quick agenda review for the agenda for next Wednesday, a week from tomorrow, very quickly. Lindsay will talk about a budget scenario builder component to the budget process, which will take about five minutes or so if you don't have questions. And then Susan Erdle-Wine's got the bulk of the day to talk about environmental issues and environmental projects within Sedgwick County. So with that, on the agenda, items A and B are onsite water well construction board resignations. Item C is a resignation from the Disabilities Advisory Board. Item D is Commissioner Cruz's appointment of Levonta Williams to the Aging and Physical Disabilities Board. Item E is Commissioner Cruz's appointment to Developmental Disabilities Advisory Board of Lay Gagny. And then we get into new business, and Lindsay will present the Quarterly Interest Bank Arena Report. Item G is a presentation from Mark Clark, the annual presentation on the report of real property value trends. Item H is a donation from, for the Suicide Prevention Coalition. Item I is the consideration of funding agreement for the Sedgwick County Fair Association Building, the $100,000 that we've been discussing for the last several months. That appears on the, for final approval on item I. Item J is the partnership agreement with the City of Wichita and with, Visit Wichita regarding the figure skating championships tournament for 2021 that we discussed with you a couple of weeks ago. Item K is, I don't know if Trish is here or not. Item K is an agreement we have to set up with PVD in case we can't, and it's looking like it's getting late enough that we're not going to get an appraiser hired by March, the second or third, when Mark Clark's temporary appointment expires. So this will be an agreement that will allow that to continue. And I don't know if, Mike, if you wanted to talk on that some more?
Well, the thing with this agreement will do is allow PVD to be our acting appraiser until we hire a appraiser.
And Mark continues to be the onsite administrator for that.
Yeah, he'll be the onsite administrator. He can no longer sign on documents. Can't get an extension.
Okay. Item L is an island annexation in Commissioner Howell's district. And then we're to consent, which is fairly routine. There is a resolution designating and classifying 53rd Street North Court to the term Sherman Township Road System. David, did you have anything on that?
It has just about a quarter mile long gravel road. There was some cul-de-sac of suburban homes there. It's small dealing, routine.
Okay. Item Q is, David, again, we're getting the paving of 61st Street done up by the alcohol plant, the ethanol plant by Colwich up there, Chairman, that we've been working on for a year, year and a half. And then R and S are easement issues. Item T is a development disability affiliation agreement with Winning Out Loud, and Tim is here if you have any questions about that. And our favorite treasure under item U is transferring a little less than a quarter million dollars to general fund from her operations. Is she here? See her background. That's it, sir, for the agenda next week. Any questions? Just, you'll get a final draft of this on Friday, but just wanted to hit it with you today very briefly. Okay, very good. Lindsay, you're up.
Thank you. Okay. So on Thursday, we will spend lots of quality time together talking about the financial forecast and the county's financial condition. And when we do that, you will see a couple of handouts. But one of them that we just kind of wanted to give you an opportunity to kind of pre-orient to is what's shown here. It is the financial forecast for our county general fund. This is updated based on 2018 activity. Most of you know, or I think we've talked about, that we do a brand-new financial forecast every year, and that forecast includes estimates for this year as well as five years into the future. And so I don't necessarily want you to focus on the results yet, because we're gonna spend a lot of time talking about the results on Thursday. But I just wanted to walk quickly through the handout with you. So essentially, what this shows you is three years of actual activity in our county general fund. At the top, it shows you on a budgetary basis what our beginning fund balance is. And so you can see that beginning in 2019, we have a balance of $68,56,631. And we'll talk about that as a percentage of the budget when we get to the forecast discussion on Thursday, because of course, you do have a policy that says we must keep at least 20% of our expenditure budget in, in the balance. And so this will be a discussion we'll wanna have as we talk about how to fund the zoo over the years and other particular initiatives that will come up. As you move down the spreadsheet, you'll see that the top section focuses on operating revenues. It summarizes those at a fairly high level. We do, of course, have hundreds of commitment items, so that we can specifically track all of these revenues coming in. But for your purposes, excuse me, you just need to understand kind of how those are grouped. And so the very top, top section, row four, current property taxes, shows how much we anticipate collecting based on the current year mill levy with the property tax rate that's planned for the general fund. That also takes into account other taxes that may be offset, so taxes to TIFs and to DIFs are caught up in that figure. As you move down, you'll see our other categories of taxes, because of course, that is what you all are asked about most often. So we do provide some detail there. Then you'll see intergovernmental revenues. And so this can include anything from what we receive from the City of Wichita, for any projects we may have ongoing with them, for the state of Kansas, and for the federal government. If we were to have any projects funded out of the general fund for Public Works or something, then this is also where you might pick up some money there. Looking at charges for service, you can see that this number starts to kind of pick up again after a decline. The decline is because we have had the mortgage registration fees cut over the years. We know that 2019 is the first year that those go completely away. But now that we've reached our plateau, we'll start to pick those up again. And then you can see the other categories, which are much smaller, and you can see your total revenue line. Then we get to operating expenditures. Personnel and benefits, of course, is the bulk of our expense in the county general fund. We are a service organization, and people provide that level of service. You can see contractuals. That would be everything from utilities to those things where we ask people to come in and help us provide service. So a good example might be for the sheriff out of county housing, or medical services for inmates. Debt service, you'll see there are some flukes here, where you'll have some debt service coming out of the general fund. That's a fairly complicated issue, and we'll talk about that more on Thursday, why that happens when we actually have a bond and interest fund. Then you'll see some other smaller expenses for capital improvements. Capital outlay, you'll see that big increase in 2018 because of your election equipment that you all approved purchasing for the election commissioner. And then transfers to other funds. The bulk of this, of course, is half of this retail and sales use taxes that goes into Mr. Spears's sales tax fund to fund road and bridge projects. So then you can see your total expenditure line. Row 27 is what we tend to most often focus on, and that is either the surplus or the deficit. A deficit isn't always bad. A deficit can be perfectly acceptable when we have a reason that we're trying to use up some of this $68 million that we have in cash, and you have a policy that permit, or tells us when we can do that. And so we'll talk more through that at the retreat as well, particularly when it comes to the zoo. So what you can see is some good news for 2019. I said, I don't wanna talk about the bottom line. I don't, but it is staring us in the face. You can see we still, even after the $2 million for the zoo, are projecting a surplus for this year. Doesn't mean I necessarily want you all to spend it right now. So then you can see down in rows 29 through 32, assessed value and mill levy rates. You do have a mill levy rate resolution right now that sets a target. You can see that this is only showing the general fund mill levy rate, which you might otherwise expect to see is a mill levy rate of 29.359 mils for all eight of our property tax-supported funds through 2022. And then we do have an intentional reduction to 28.758 in 2023 and 2024. And so when you see all of this in context, you will see that bigger figure. But this is just the impact again to the county general fund. If you wanna know, yes, sir?
Lindsay, remind me again, on line 16, tell me, it went to hundreds of thousands, $11 million back to $153,000?
Sure.
Tell me, you've explained that, I think, before, but tell me again, remind me.
Well, and honestly, I don't know that I have. So in 2018, we had two bond sales that we did. We did a $7 million bond sale for Spirit, and we did $3 million, well, $3.6 million for the Ronald Reagan building. All of that cash initially was received in our debt proceeds fund. And then because we had already made expenditures out of the general fund, or we intended to make those expenditures out of the general fund, that cash was transferred from the debt proceed fund into the general fund. And so that accounts for 10.6 million of that figure you see there. And then for the year in transfers, we did $3 million earmarked for the administration building at the end of the year. And then we paid for a portion of the I-235 interchange payment in 2018 with the additional $600,000 for that first Ronald Reagan building. The $7 million was simply to reimburse us for an actual outlay of cash, which you would see up in the contractual figure, or I'm sorry, row 20. If you look at 2018, you can see there was a pretty healthy jump. And that is primarily because of that $7 million we paid out to Spirit from the general fund, but then reimbursed ourselves through that transfer from those, and from the debt proceed fund, if that makes sense.
Helpful. Thank you.
Then on the back, if you have, if you're really feeling nerdy, like we do in finance, you can look at all of the rates of change over the years. I don't necessarily suggest you spend a lot of time on this, but if you really want to, feel free, and we can talk in more detail at the retreat if you have questions. So I think I've gone over my five minutes. I'm sorry. But if there are any questions, I can answer. I'm happy to try.
Any questions?
May I get this electronically?
Absolutely.
An Excel spreadsheet?
We can copy and paste it into an Excel spreadsheet, sure.
Okay, that'd be, that'd be most useful. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lindsay.
No problem.
That was awesome.
All right.
And the budget race is official.
Good morning. Let me get this pulled up here. Okay. I've been asked to talk about environmental issues today, and the variety of issues that we face with our department. So I'm going to talk about some past and current issues. And I really wanna thank all my staff in Environmental Resources and the Household Hazardous Waste Group, because we couldn't do this without their work and dedication. We work with different divisions in the county to look at the chemicals that our employees use, and make sure they have the proper safety data sheets that tell them how to handle the chemicals properly for personal protective equipment, storage, signage, and disposal. And the bottom right photo is what you don't want to see in one of our facilities. So we work with the employees to help their work environment. We also work on properties that we currently own or are looking at. The upper-left photo is a photo from some time back when all of our fire stations used to have underground storage tanks. I worked with Public Works to remove those tanks from the facilities. And some of them, unfortunately, were contaminated. Those steel tanks rusted from sitting in the ground and the water contact. Groundwater was contaminated in few areas. And I worked to get us in the state trust fund. So we paid a little bit of money upfront, and since then, the Kansas Department of Health and Environment has been paying for all of the monitoring wells and water testing. I'm happy to say our stillwell yard just was reported clean, and the state's gonna be plugging all of the monitoring wells there. And so that's good news. And we look at buildings before the purchase, like the bottom right, to see, is this something the county needs to negotiate the price on, because we found the following issues. Interest Bank Arena, actually, the final shape of the building had to do with environmental issues. I was at the first stakeholder meeting on even where would we put the arena. And they had a consultant from Tennessee who had built a lot of arenas come in. He said, the best thing to do is walk in on the top level, and everything is underground. And so you walk in and go deep underground for the events. And Bill Buchanan looked at me, and I shook my head no, and he said, Susan said no. And so I had to give a little speech about the groundwater, the top of the water table in downtown Wichita is about 14 feet under the surface. So you'd be hitting groundwater. And he said, wait, hold it. We can put in a bunch of sump pumps, big ones, be pumping that water all the time. And I said, the contaminated groundwater is 14 feet under, and we'd be drawing all that contaminated water to the arena. Now it's our property, and we can't just dump it in the river or put it in the sewage. We'd have to pay to dispose of all of this groundwater. So as you can see, we do not walk in at the top level and go down. And that was due to environmental issues. And here's the blue cloud, as we referred to it when we first looked at where the arena would go, somewhere in that blue area. So we looked at all of the properties in those areas to see if there were any contaminated sites, any known problems. And then when it narrowed down, we had to look at each specific property to make sure it was okay. And here you can see where the blue cloud sits, and the gray areas are the groundwater contamination known as the Gilbert and Mosley plume, from all of the different industries that we've had, and the groundwater contamination from that. As you know now, there's a monitoring well and pumping system in that area to take the water down to Broadway and Pawnee for treatment, for airstripping. Even looking at the schedule, this was created by Larry Posenka, who was the head of the arena project. If you notice, the first thing on the schedule is environmental site assessment, a base asbestos reviews and removal. And we also had to do mercury switch removals. We looked at all the buildings to see what the thermostats were, if they were old mercury type, and those had to be removed. So quite a few months of environmental before the demolition even started. And this is a flow chart that Larry created. And you can see that Larry's name is right here. Mine's over here to the left of that. And I had to work with the City of Wichita, the state, the contractors, because this was a contaminated site. KDHE was very involved in this, was on top of this, on how we disposed of any water that came into contact with the surface, any soil disposal, all of that we were involved with. So when the demolition started, there was another aspect. If you look in this picture, you can see bricks are being stacked and wrapped for reuse. So whatever material could be reused, the contractor had agreed to reuse that material, and he recycled the steel from the building. So we had a lot of recycling going on during the demolition that the public may not have been aware of. We also had a contaminated site, the southeast corner of the arena parking lot. It used to be an old dry cleaner, so you had PCE contamination in the soil. City of Wichita had gained this property as an orphaned site, because they couldn't go back on the owners. They couldn't find them. And so I worked with KDHE and the City of Wichita to try to hurry up and clean that site up in a two-year process of airstripping. Even if the surface of the concrete was cracked, we had to go through and test it to make sure there weren't volatile organic compounds coming up through the concrete. So we were on top of that. And we also found tanks while we were doing this project for the arena. The gray soil you see over on the right side of the photo is indicative of contaminated soil from fuels. You could even smell it if you grabbed the soil and smelled that. But we were lucky to dig all of that out. I talked to the state about us taking this to the county's west yard, and making windrows, and turning it to get rid of the volatiles. They agreed to that. So we didn't have to pay for taking all of that soil down to the hazardous waste landfill in Oklahoma, which, as you can imagine, is quite expensive. We also tested the drillings as they drilled all the pilings for the arena. We tested the soil to see if there was any contamination. Samples were taken to the laboratory, and I made sure that we only had the soil in certain areas stacked together. We didn't stack all the soil together. When it was clean, then we took it off-site. And the reason for that is I didn't want the county to make the headlines, like other projects had recently, where the soil had been mixed together, now all of it was considered contaminated. So we tried to work on these issues to make sure that county stayed out of the newspaper and spent as little money as possible. We did this again with the Coleman site. The largest part of the contract for the county buying the Coleman building was the environmental part, making sure that Coleman was still liable for the cleanup into the future of that site. There was asbestos problems. Walking the building up there, I took photos of any of these black areas through the ceiling penetrations or along the edge of the building were asbestos. So those had to be removed, along with mercury switches within the buildings. If you looked at the destruction of the building, they recycle material even to the rebar. They'd pull that out and put it in with the steel. So quite a bit of recycling went on there, and reuse the bricks. The blue outline on this slide shows the property that the county purchased from Coleman. This is St. Francis over on the left, Second Street, right there, north of the main part of the property. The parking lot was north of Second Street for the employees who worked at Coleman. Then you had a lot of buildings, the north building plus buildings along the site down here. We had to inspect all of those for problems. And here's a map of the contamination from that building. Everything in yellow is a contaminated site. Some of these, the chemicals found, the level might be five parts per billion, and some of the water tests were over 1,000 parts per billion. So you can see why we were concerned about the environmental, on the ground and beneath. There used to be radiation problems on the soil, and a lot of that had been removed by Coleman. So we worked with this site and worked with KDHE. They didn't want any soil leaving the site, period. None of it could be taken out. Even the concrete at the bottom of the buildings that touched any of these yellow areas, we had to scrape that to make sure the soil stayed on-site. It was that intense with the state. The site had a lot of monitoring wells. We had to protect those, making sure equipment wouldn't run over those. All of those wells had to be plugged before the parking lot could be put in. And then they had to be redrilled through the parking lot. And you can see here, a drill from putting it in, looking at the drill stem from it and the core sample. And you can see the monitoring wells. This one hasn't quite been finished yet. And that's what it looks like on the bottom right when it's finished, so cars could park over it. There were nested pairs of wells, because some chemicals float on the top of the water table, and some sink to the bottom. So you have a shallow well and a deep well. So that's why you see two together at every location, to test the different types of chemicals. And the bricks from the building, when you see bricks out at the parking lot, that's where they came from. In the, when you're walking, or the structures, all of those were from the building. And the archway, there's the original archway for the building. When it was taken down, the material was labeled and put back up. So that is the original Coleman archway. And I worked a lot with project services, especially Rob Lawrence, on this project. Now let's change gears here and talk trash. Each of us produce about four and a half pounds of trash per day. And as you see from this photo, a lot of that was in that could be recycled. We have the responsibility for solid waste for the county. And this is Brooks landfill, when it was in operation as a municipal solid waste landfill. You could see all the cardboard being thrown away there on the lower-left photo. And those are seagulls. I swear Alfred Hitchcock went to a landfill to come up with the birds movie. And you had to watch where you were walking when you were out there, because not only what you were walking on, but what might fall from up above. The upper-right photo, you can see empty drums that were dumped there. So we did what's called a waste analysis when Brooks was still open, where you, that's a polite way of saying you're sorting through people's trash to see what they're throwing away. We also did it with the transfer stations. You can see all of this trash being thrown away. So we wanted to sort through it and look at what's thrown away, representative sample from random trucks that we would pick, about half commercial and half residential, because that was what's going into our waste stream. We would open the bags and sort through it. We would weigh the material to determine what was being thrown away. We did this seasonally, so each season would have a different composition. And you'd expect that, more grass in the summer, not in the winter. And this gives an example of, you open the bag, and it could be a mixture of material, or like on the bottom right, you had a heavy smoker there and a lot of cigarette butts. Nothing smells, well, yeah, there's several things that smell worse than that. But that's pretty bad when it's liquid and you open that bag. Grass has been sitting in a black bag outside, smells really bad when you open it. Something with maggots crawling through it is pretty bad as well. This was taken in February. That was a whole uncooked turkey in February that we found. And there was another cooked turkey that we found in that pick that we threw away. Look at the bottom-right photo, though. That's a box of chocolates with only about three of them out of it. Rest of it was thrown away. And then you have the cream puffs there. Three are still there. One was eaten or partially eaten. So you gotta be careful what you buy for people. They may not like it. And, you know, you go to a store, and you see all of this material on the shelf, and it's for that holiday, whatever that holiday is. So this was Valentine's Day. You ever wonder what happens to all of that material after the holiday? Those are brand-new teddy bears that were thrown away by the store, brand-new yo-yo still in the package. They just took everything off the shelf, and it went into the dumpsters. So we've been working with companies. Kroger, by the way, is being very good about trying to reach zero waste right now, and trying to give material like this away, instead of throwing it away. And here a guy really, or a gal, took turning 40 very hard. Someone has spent a lot of money on that gift that was casket-shaped with all of those 40 items in it. They just threw the whole thing in the trash. So again, be careful what you buy. And this pie chart shows what we found. The majority of what our community throws away is paper. Over 29% of what goes in the trash, paper products that could be recycled. Yard waste was 17%, plastic 14%, food waste just under 10%. So there's a lot of areas there that we can work with to reduce the waste. But we've also used this information for companies that want to relocate here, and they need a product that they want to recycle, and see if there's enough of that type of material for their business. County also has a household hazardous waste facility where people can drop off their cleaners, or old paint, or other products they no longer use but don't want to throw in the trash and should not throw in the trash. They can pull up under that cover, and our staff goes out, takes the material out of their vehicle, and takes it into the facility. If the labels are good and the product's good, we'll put it out on, in our swapping shop, where other residents can come in and take the material for free. So we don't have to pay for the disposal. So they win for not paying for it, and we win for not incurring a cost. We also have remote collection events, one in each commission district. And later this week, I'll be sending the commissioners information about this. I've already lined up Pete's at Beechcraft, but there are others. I'll be sending tables showing where it's been in the past. But just to give you an idea of how weather or other factors may make a difference, in 2013, at a Derby remote, we had almost 600 cars with 35,000 pounds of material. And this is in a four-hour period. 2015, about half the cars, but almost double the amount of material. So you never know what to expect on these remotes and what might come in. Just to show you the 2018 numbers, we've had over 25,000 customers go to our facility. Over 10,000 of those went to the swapping shop. Over 2,000 brought drugs. And we can take over-the-counter and non-controlled drugs. So we can't take any morphines or codeins, material like that, except on the DEA takebacks. We took in over a million pounds of material, over, well, almost a million, 500,000 pounds, and we recycled over a million pounds of that. So that gives you an idea of what we handle. We also handle specific ways. Christmas tree recycling, just ended this past January 23rd. There are 22 sites around the county. There are 22 sites around the county. Ten of those are in the city of Wichita. And the others are in the smaller cities where we work with Mark Schroff from the Parks Department. We set up the sites and people bring the Christmas trees. He goes around and mulches them and then the mulch material is available for free for the public. We've had five waste tire events in the past, starting back in 2000. The last one up at the top, 2017, we had over 100,000 tires from over 1,300 vehicles. Tires are bad for the environment. Not only are they unsightly, but they hold water and lead to mosquito breeding. So we want to get them out. If you look back over time, you can see the numbers were higher. So we've about cut it in half and I'm hoping as we keep doing this, we'll get rid of more of the tires. I'm glad to see the numbers going down. That bottom photo is of a county yard with the tires from one of our events. These photos are also, and we're planning another tire event this April. The 18th is for governments and businesses with large trucks coming in. And the 19th and 20th are for residents bringing in tires. We really don't want someone who hasn't backed up a trailer in ages, if you've ever watched this, you know the trailer's going every direction, next to a big truck. That's dangerous. So we try to keep that separated. So we're looking forward to this tire event coming up this April. We've also had electronic waste events where, we had one back in '09, over 2,600 vehicles, over a million pounds in one day. And that was in, up at the Coliseum in one of the pavilions. We had double lines coming in. I opened the event early because people were lining up outside. And I'd never do another one-day event like that again. It was, it was cold, it was in January, and the response was fantastic. That gives you an idea of some of the stuff coming in. Look at that trailer with all of the TVs on it. And you can see the old monitor type. And we took more than computers and TVs. We took other electronics as well. We had another event last year where we had six days, a Thursday, Friday, Saturday, followed the next week by Thursday, Friday, Saturday. Great response, over 3,800 vehicles, over half a million pounds. And on this event, we only took TVs, cell phones, computers and monitors and mice and peripheral material. So we took quite a bit of material and it really had a nice response. I'm thinking of doing this again in 2020. We also, the staff goes out and inspects the facilities. We have two privately-owned transfer stations. We have two construction and demolition landfills. Those are inspected randomly every single week to make sure they're adhering to the rules. We have our own county regulations on those. I also work with townships on illegal dumping. We provide signage. They pick up the material, but we pay for the dumping fee and that works out well. We also have cleanups that we do. I've worked with Division of Aging for some time on some of their customers who have too much material where they can't handle it anymore and they don't have the money to dispose of it, but they can get family or friends to help clean it up. And we also work with MABCD on the same thing where they have people they're going to start to find. We'll supply the dumpster drop-off pickup and the cost of disposal and we'll arrange for all of that. And they tell us who the customer is. And that's a before and after photo you see there. So it helps, it really works with the cleanups and helps to get our community better. Storm debris, whether it's from an ice storm, wind, flooding, tornadoes, we like to address those issues. The county has purchased an air curtain burner and a tub grinder that are portable so they can go out to communities. The air curtain burner burns at a very high temperature and produces very little smoke. State loves that and it really helps on the ozone and doesn't pollute that. The tub grinder, we've taken to Goddard and after an ice storm recently, recently being like two years ago. And they ground the material and the mulch was then available for Goddard to use in their park system as well as open for the citizens to come and get the mulch. So it's reused in that area. Even as we speak right now, we have storm debris cleanup going on at Deer Lakes Estates. That's down near Cave 15 and Spirit area. The 2012 tornado that went through and damaged homes in Oak Lawn and Deer Lakes Estates, the houses and all were cleared out, but equipment couldn't get down easily to the creek. So since 2012, you've had trees falling into the creek, causing log jams, other material backing up behind it. And it's been a mess. Well, we're using the solid waste fee for storm debris to help clean that up. And that should be cleaned up by the end of this month or beginning of next. And none of this could happen without having a solid waste plan. The state requires an annual update on our plan and a five-year in-depth update, which happened last year. And the plan addresses how do we handle waste and recycling, collection and disposal, special waste like I've been talking about, projects? And the solid waste fee, which has to be voted on by the commission by July 1st of every year. So some of these projects we've been doing have been recommended to the commissioners by the Solid Waste Committee. And that's composed of 15 members. And the bottom right is photo of medical waste drop-off containers. Right now, we're talking to some of the small cities in the county to see about putting these at their police stations to take controlled drugs as well as the regular drugs where citizens could just go, drop them off, no names asked, nothing. They go away and we can take care of the drugs that way. So that's one of our projects in addition to the tire event this year. Now to change subjects again, still referring to storms, though. Stormwater runoff into sand pits is an in-depth project we had with the state and federal governments. The problem here was, when you look at the top of a lake at a sand pit, that's the top of the water table. When they dig the sand out, they're in very sandy area, usually near rivers, the water table's very high. So what you're seeing is the water table. And the environmental groups were concerned that runoff into the sand pits would hurt the groundwater, go out of that area. And if people had water wells, it would contaminate them. Developers said, no, like a septic tank, the soil removes the contaminants. So we worked with them to find sites in Sedgwick County. The red dots show the six locations that were selected for this study. The top one called Crop was a control that had mainly trees around it, a little crop but no development. We picked different ages of sand pits and development around them to see if there was a difference. We had to have wells drilled for this. One nor, the red dots show the well locations. The one north of the sand pit, which is at the, toward the top of the slide is north, is to show the quality of the water before it hits the sand pit. The two red dots to the south shows the quality of water when it leaves the sand pit. In Sedgwick County, groundwater mainly flows northwest to southeast. I worked with the Bureau of Reclamation. They donated about $78,000 of their crew and equipment to drill these wells. And you can see the, we had to figure out the elevation of the water, the depth of the sand pit to determine how deep to drill the monitoring wells. They were cored, so I could review the cores when they were removed. It was really a great project. This result shows for atrazine. The gray line at the top is from the moorings. The dot on the left is the upgradient well showing the level of atrazine in that well. You can see how high it was in the sand pit and then that the southwest and southeast wells were much higher than the upgradient well. You can see the same thing in the blue line for Barefoot Bay, low upgradient. Then you can see high in the pit and downgradient wasn't much lower than what we found in the sand pit. And the orange line there is the crop, the control, a little bit in the sand pit, but you can see the downgradient wells were equivalent to the upgradient well. So this showed that contamination can get out of the sand pit. Lot of it was below the drinking water standards. There were some spikes, though, like an arsenic that was above drinking water standards. So we did this and actually I was asked to do a webinar on this to a national audience just this past December. So December 20th, I did that and had very good response on this presentation. Stormwater is also an issue throughout the county with flooding. This county has a stormwater management advisory board that have used money from the county to look at watershed studies. They hired a consultant to do Spring Creek Basin watershed, which is north of Derby, and looks at that watershed contributing to the city of Derby. And another watershed at West Branch Chisholm Creek, which is the purple area on that map, which is up near Valley, excuse me, Valley Center and Park City. The studies looked at where the flooding was occurring and what could be done to remedy those floodings. There's also groundwater flooding issues. That bottom-left photo shows the watermark from groundwater coming up through the people's floor into the basement. You can see it went at least four feet up. That was an issue down on South Hydralic. We worked with the state on making sure we could get dewatering wells for that area. Unfortunately, the cost of the whole project was more than the citizens could bear at this time. But we looked at that to see how we could help the citizens. Water quality and quantity is always an issue. We work with the Conservation District Board, an advisor to that board, and they're elected and they have a set of best management practices that they can give money to help landowners put those in place on their land. That could be waterways or terracing or contouring of the land to help slow down water runoff. And that's what you see on the bottom-left photo. When you don't have those practices in place, you don't have cover crops, rain falls on it and just roads the soil away. Also with the landowners put on too much fertilizer, there we go. The fertilizer runs off, gets into the streams, into the lakes. Algae loves the fertilizer and you have algae blooms from that. And when the algae dies, the decomposition takes up oxygen, then you have fish kills. We've had many calls from homeowners associations where their ponds have all of the fish dead. The whole surface is covered with dead fish. And the reason is, when you go out and look at it, the lawns are manicured and fertilized all the way to the water's edge. They have no buffer strip around it. The fertilizer gets into the pond, the algae grows. Again, the algae dies, takes up the oxygen. Fish need oxygen in the water to live and you have mass die-off. So we've worked with homeowners and we did a big study out at Lake Afton and spent a lot of time and effort out there to slow down the algae growth that they've been seeing. Special projects also include Exploration Place. I worked with Jan Luth on a federal grant and provided information for the aquifer exhibit. Did a lot of work for their aquifer exhibit and Kansas exhibit. And on a personal note, the plane, the sailplane you see on the right there is my husband's and my sailplane that we've taken vacation days and gone to Exploration Place and schools. We take the plane to talk about aviation, and this is aviation camps, and how the weather and thermals can allow you to fly for hours without landing and even go great distances. We've had one friend go from here all the way to the Mexico border in a glider. So people don't realize that, and you don't have to stop for gas or worry about the motor quitting. So it's very good. And kids love it. The top photo is inside Exploration Place. It's a 50-foot wingspan. And kids walk in and it's great to see the look on the face on how did you get that inside a building? So that's always fun. Special projects right now on wind farms and solar farms, looking at that with the MAPD and hopefully working on new regulations through this moratorium. And working with the Sioux right now on their water quantity. Recently, they added the elephant exhibit, which took more water. And they have plans for 25 years in the future for more water. I have a meeting this Friday in Stafford with DWR to discuss with them the ability of other water and how can we get more wells drilled. So with that, I think I've covered a variety of issues. There are more, but I'd like to turn it over to Daniel Schrant from Public Works to talk about other animal issues such as endangered species.
My name is Daniel Schrant. I'm a construction engineer for Sedgwick County Public Works. And I've been asked to talk a little bit about environmental regulations on our construction projects throughout Sedgwick County. So first, to go through a couple of the agencies that we typically get permits from, we have KDH&amp;E, the Kansas Department of Wildlife, Parks and Tourism, the Division of Water Resources, and the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. Just like what Susan Erllein was just talking about, stormwater quality coming off of our construction sites is very important. And we use several different practices to keep our sites stabilized. So we use silt fence, as you see in the picture there, but we'll also use biologs, turf reinforcement mats, concrete washouts for our trucks leaving the site. And we need to get permits from KDH&amp;E on any sites that are greater than one acre of area of disturbance. And we'll also develop a stormwater pollution prevention plan on those projects. That stormwater pollution prevention plan also requires that we do site reviews of the construction site to make sure that our BMPs are effective every 14 days we'll go out there and also after any large rain event. The Division of Water Resources is organized underneath, under the Kansas Department of Agriculture. And when we get our permits from them, they are primarily looking at potential impacts to upstream and downstream properties and making sure that we're in compliance with FEMA regulations. But when we get that permit, we're also required to adhere to the Water Project's Environmental Coordination Act. And what that requires us to do is to allow other agencies to comment on our projects. So that will be other state agencies like the Kansas Forest Service, the Kansas Biological Survey, the Division of Conservation, KDH&amp;E, and the Wildlife and Parks Department. We also get federal permits. The most common permit that we'll have to get is from the Army Corps of Engineers. We'll have to get with them on any projects that we're working within the waters of the United States. And I know that term has been in the news recently, but it really hasn't impacted our construction projects too much. And typically, that's because we're working on getting nationwide permits. And what that basically is, it's a project template that we fit to our projects. So they have certain projects already outlined, such as road building, bridge building, power line transmission construction, that they tend to fast-track through their permitting process. If we can't get one of those, we have to get an individual permit. That can take much longer to get. The review process is a lot more tedious. But when we get those nationwide permits, we'll usually get a result back within 30 to 60 days. And on those federal permits, if we have a federal nexus, and that's any project where we have a connection either through the waters of the U.S. or we have to get federal authorization or we have federal money involved, that opens up an avenue for other comments from the EPA or the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service to comment on our projects. So here is a list of the threatened and endangered species in Sedgwick County. I'm not a biologist, so I can't talk a whole lot about these species in general, but I am going to go through several of the species that have impacted our projects over the last several years. So that list included four endangered or threatened fish species. And typically, when we get those notifications on our projects, we need to minimize our in-stream disturbance activities on those projects. And typically, all that requires us to do is schedule our projects accordingly and have them start at the right time of the year so that we're not in the stream during their spawning seasons, which generally runs from March to August. We have the threatened eastern spotted skunk. And when we have critical habitat on our projects for these critters, we need to make sure that we maintain cover and brush in designated areas. And so that might be brush piles or maybe just all-out avoiding taking trees from a specified area. On the eastern spotted skunk, we identified one particular type of, excuse me, one particular type of project that they were consistently impacting our projects, and those were our stream maintenance projects. So for- So four, three or four years ago, we entered into a memorandum of agreement with them. And that memorandum of agreement was based on a trust that we developed with Wildlife and Parks, that they knew what we were doing and we were trying to do the right thing and we did it consistently. And so they felt comfortable with us in removing that environmental review process entirely from specific types of projects. And what that agreement stressed was avoidance minimization and restoration of impacts. So the avoidance and minimization, that required us to not just go out and clear-cut the repairing corridor along a stream. We weren't looking to take out all the trees. We were looking to make targeted strikes on these streams to take out whatever obstructions are in the streams. And then the restoration part of it was, we did not use our typical seed mix that we used to repair those areas. So we developed a seed mix that was beneficial to the eastern spotted skunk, and that just involved seeding with some native grasses that grew a little bit taller, thicker, offered that protection to the eastern spotted skunk, as opposed to just going back with a fescue or buffalo grass. And I also point out that this agreement was unique. And at the time, it was the only agreement of its kind in the state of Kansas. The endangered lease tern is a federal and state-protected species, and they nest along the Arkansas River on sandbars. Sedgwick County does have one site on the Arkansas River where we can go and collect sand for our winter road operations. We have an individual permit on that site with the Army Corps of Engineers, so it was not covered by one of those nationwide permits. But anytime that we want to get in there and remove sand, we need to coordinate with the Division of Wildlife, Parks and Tourism. They go in and make sure that there are no active nesting sites. The site is signed year-round, anytime that there's any nesting site, so that the general public also knows, don't go in there. Because their nests, as you can see in the picture, are just right on the surface of the sandbar, so they're not very deep and they're very vulnerable. This is a Canadian goose, and I think everyone here is well aware that they are not threatened or endangered. They are everywhere, but they are still protected. And they're protected under the Migratory Bird Treaty Act. We had some active nests on our MacArthur Road project, a bridge project by Lake Afton a few years ago. And the contractor was notified of the nests by someone in the public. They knew that they were federally protected species, and the contractor requested that we delay the project until the birds moved on. We did not want to delay the project, so we worked with our partners at the Division of Wildlife and Parks to get a permit to remove those nests and keep the project on And finally, we have barn swallows. Barn swallows are also protected by the Migratory Bird Treaty Act. There are over 1,000 species on that list that are protected, and there are 12 different species of swallows. But barn swallows, as you can see in the picture, they like to create their mud nests on the underside of bridges. And in Oklahoma, a few years ago, there was a contractor that removed nests from a bridge, and they were fined over $800,000 that they had to donate to a conservation fund to make up for that destruction. And these are present in Sedgwick County. We're always looking out for them. I've noticed them on US 54 out near Garden Plain. If you're heading east into the city of Wichita and you look up, you'll see some of these nests on the bridges. So some that we have to look out for and make sure that we account for before we start our project. And then if there's any questions for Susan or myself, we'd be happy to answer those.
Questions? Any of the commissioners?
What groups within the community do you guys actively participate with?
For construction projects?
Well, just like Great Plains Nature Center or all the other environmental groups within our communities that might have a vested interest in what we're doing.
Well, on construction projects, we coordinate with other agencies. The Great Plains Nature Center is, of course, part of the Wildlife, Parks and Tourism Department. And so they get coordinated with on all of our projects regardless of size. Some permits are restricted by size and scope, you know, if the project's an acre or more, then we work with the Historical Society or KDH&amp;E. But Wildlife Parks, Wildlife and Parks is different, and they get coordinated with on every single project that we do, even if it's a small bridge.
Not necessarily like construction projects, but just like, you know, with the wind and solar, I've had a lot of questions about who we're going to be talking to and how we're going to be doing our research as far as making sure that we're, whatever standards we're putting in place.
We're looking at other communities and what they've done for solar and wind, what they've put in place. And also, I think it'd be a good idea to have public comment on whatever we come up with. But there are Sierra Club and there are other clubs in our community that I'm sure would want to have some say or at least know what we're doing.
Yeah. So I think we have, we had talked about scheduling a public comment, like the end of March or whenever we decide to do it.
I think at some point, we'll have a public forum, probably up at the Extension Center, and discuss the talk, end of March.
Sounds good.
Susan, can you just, how many advisory boards do you have reporting to you, are you part of?
Conservation District, Stormwater, Air Quality Task Force, which is run by the city of Wichita. Gosh.
A lot.
There's a, yeah. The list can go on. But there's a lot of different environmental groups, and they seem to be focused on one topic. There's the Kansas Association of Wetlands out there that we work with. So there are many agencies and civic groups out there. So it's quite a few.
But really, no umbrella group. That's what's interesting about all of the different facets that they went through today and everything that Susan's got her fingers in. There's really no umbrella group that kind of gets together and just talks about general state environment, so FYI.
Do you all feel like it would be good to have something like that? I mean, if we have all these different groups doing all of this different stuff, how do they coordinate with each other? That was a question I had about creating an environmental advisory board or something of that nature. I'm not trying to make any more work and I'm not trying to, you know, do anything that's already happening, but I just wonder how they're communicating with each other, especially with the solar and wind. You know, I've had a lot of people that have asked me specific questions and, you know, I will obviously refer to the experts that are doing this, but that was one question that came up as far as how do they communicate with each other? And they all have a vested interest and they all have the different questions. Is there a way to answer them all at one time?
Really, there's no communication between the groups unless you have one person who's with this group, that group, and you could just share the knowledge. But besides that, they don't have huge meetings with everyone getting together. So if you had an environmental umbrella group, I think you'd like probably have one member from each of those organizations that could bring their knowledge plus general public that's interested in it, so they could all learn from each other.
Maybe that's something we could put as an agenda item for our public meeting and see if there's any interest in that.
Sounds good.
Other questions?
One thing came up the other night, Dale Miller's familiar with it, and I had never thought of it before, but many times a terrace goes across the whole section when they start terracing land. And if you remove a section of that terrace out, because we obviously are growing here in Sedgwick County, if you remove a section of that terrace to develop a new development of houses, it looks like there's sometimes, depending on who paid to build those terraces, why you've got to get their permission before you can tear them out. But other times, if the farmers paid to put them in, then you don't have to get permission to tear them out. But the problem is, once you tear it out, why, that impacts all the farmers that were relying on it on either side of that development. So I guess my question is, what, it's going to cause some erosion or some flooding on someone once you start ripping out terraces? And we don't have anything, as far as I know, in our, in our planning documents to address something along those lines.
Whenever there's a development that goes in anywhere in the unincorporated area of county, as far as that goes Wichita, then the unincorporated part, they're required to give us a drainage plan. And a lot of times, there has to be a detention pond or something like that to collect the water. But the rule is that the post, the post-development runoff cannot exceed the pre-development runoff.
This is a question that, this is a question that Commissioner Howell and I have talked about. The problem is that we go through the zoning process, and we'll approve a zoning on a piece of property, and the plating comes after that. And the plating, you can rezone something to develop something, and we don't know what the impact is going to be on the runoff as we're deciding on that zoning. So we're going to have a case come before the commission here within the next month or so, and it's going to be a zoning case. But it, we don't know the impact of approving that zoning case because we don't know what the impact is on the flooding. Do we need to take a look at the sequence?
I have worked for some communities that required that when you did a zone change, and if it was unplatted land, you had to turn in a plat at the same time. The problem with that is, plating is so much more expensive than a zone change that if you don't get your zoning approved, you have spent, the developer has, has spent a large amount of money on the front end to prepare a plat that he no longer needs. That, when I came here to Wichita, that was the explanation that was explained to me why the city and the county don't require them to be submitted at the same time. And as county engineers pointed out, they are required to submit a drainage plan. It is reviewed by the stormwater engineer, whether it's in the city of Wichita or whether it's in Sedgwick County. And they are required to show that there's not going to be any more water coming off that site after it's developed than it was before. And then attorney may want to weigh in, but I believe it's state law, that whatever falls on your land, you, whatever water falls on your land, you're responsible to dispose of without impacting the property next door. And so there are state and local guidelines that address that. But it would be a policy question on whether you wanted to change the process and require plats to be submitted with zone changes on land that is not platted. That certainly is a policy consideration, but...
But I understand it as part of the zoning and plating, but when we're talking about farmers and we're putting in terraces that go across land, we recognize the fact that water that falls on one farmer's field is going to go across to another farmer's field based on that terrace.
And I guess what I would say is, that would be a policy decision that the commission would need to wrestle with, but as farm ground converts to urban uses, then it's going to be incumbent on, unless there's a change in the regulations, it would be incumbent on the next-door property owner that has the terrace for him to figure out how to take care of that water.
So what you're saying is that if we've got a section of land out here and we put a development in the middle of that, and for years and years, we've been farming that entire section of land as farmland, and now because the developer's taking 80 acres out of the middle of that, we're going to go back to the farmer that's upstream from that and tell him you're going to be penalized for this development because now your water is going to run onto this development's property?
Well, unless you want to change the rules and say that it is the developer's responsible for 100% of the cost of addressing the conversion of that farm ground to non-urban use. I mean, again, that's a policy question.
I think we're going to have to get the Farm Bureau involved in this or some of the farming organizations, because this is truly a direct impact on every farmer that we've got in western Sedgwick County or all of Sedgwick County.
And Sherman? The NRCS are the ones that design the terraces for the farmers, and they make it money from NRCS or the Sedgwick County Conservation District to implement the terraces. That's why you, some may still be in the case of you can't change that for a certain period of time because you received that money. And if you do change it, you may have to pay them back.
Well, I agree. This property that we're talking about, that we're going to be faced with making decisions on in the near future, they did, Dale actually contacted the KNRC and they said that this terraces are too old, that they won't penalize them. But I still have a problem with telling a farmer out there that's been living on that land is to, you know, there's some hundred-year farms out in Sedgwick County. And if I go back and tell this person that's been farming this land, his family, for 100 years, that now you're going to have to pay to take care of your water runoff that you've been taking care of for years and years because of terraces, I'm going to have some significant pushback.
I agree.
Where does the state come in? When we do one acre or above and the state has to come in and give an NOI, do they not, do they not address the drainage issue or talk about the drainage issue? Because all these projects would bother more than an acre, right?
Yes. We used to permit those best management practices for runoff for more than an acre out in the unincorporated area, but the commissioners, a few years ago, brought that in closer to kind of a halo around the incorporated cities.
KDHE still requires it over one acre.
Come on.
Yeah, the NOI from KDHE still requires a permit for any site like that, but they're looking more at the stormwater quality aspect of it. As far as quantity, the Division of Water Resources will get involved only when it's a designated stream, which means it has one square mile of drainage area or more.
Right.
Which is pretty big.
Yes.
Well, we're going to have to figure something out before this comes before us, and it's not too far away. And I am not going to penalize a farmer that's been farming out there, his family, for 100 years because somebody's going to put a development in the middle of that section of land.
And I'm not familiar with the case, but is it the farmer? Did he sell a piece of his property for the development? Or is it a neighboring farmer?
Yeah, I believe it's a neighboring farmer that sold to a developer.
Let me get with Dale offline and talk through what we can...
Well, I just don't want this to become a big issue, and it is certainly going to become a big issue when we start telling, and it's going to happen more and more as we keep developing west and we run into properties that has terracing on it, and they're going to tear it out in order to make a nice flat lot for somebody to build a house on.
Okay.
One other question. Have we ever seen a spotted skunk in Sedgwick County?
I've never seen one. I made a call to Pika one time and asked him where they were. They're mainly along the Kouskin, but I said, has anybody ever seen, because my crews have never seen one either that work out in the stream maintenance. And the guy said, one was reported as a roadkill in 1990 down on South Broadway.
One's been reported as a roadkill at near 21st and Ridge, and they've actually been seen out at Lake Afton.
How long ago?
I'd say 10 years ago. They're inclusive.
I'm kind of glad I've never seen one.
Well, we do a lot of work for something that may not exist. That's my only worry.
They're active at night.
Staff has finished, sir, and we're a little bit over time, so just that way.
Okay, I'm sorry. Does any other commissioners have any questions? Mr. Howell?
I have some questions, but just a kind of a comment on page 21. Looking at the tires, do we know how much money we spend on that tire around that typically?
Off the top of my head, I think the last one we have is $89,000.
Just a comment, and I just did the simple math. The first time we did this, when we had a lot of, a lot more vehicles, it was an average of 38 per vehicle. Then it's gone up to as high as 83 per vehicle on average. That's just, that just surprises me. This is for residential people in the county to bring tires that they might have that they don't want any longer. I assume that they have the option of, when they buy a tire, to dispose of their old tire for $4, and they're making a choice not to do that. And so they just collect those up in the backyard. I'm wondering if we're, if we're creating maybe a negative incentive here to the county. I don't want them to dump these on county roads either. I want to keep, I want to solve the problem. But the average right now, last time we did this, was 77 tires per vehicle average. I just think that maybe we're, we're seeing some behavior that we're creating... I just think that maybe we're, we're seeing some behavior that we're creating, people are collecting these tires somehow, and they're bringing them in. I don't know if it's businesses or someone, I don't have, I don't know what's going on here. It doesn't make sense to me.
I agree. We have a concern that we don't want people to just store them and wait for the next tire event. Townships collect these throughout the year and wait for us to have a tire event. But I also know some people who have bought land out in the county, and then as they start cleaning it up, decided, oh, there's a tire here or there, no big deal, and they ended up with 150 tires. So it's, can be something that's happened over a long period of time. You can kind of tell by, are the tires dirty when they come in, or does it look like they've been stored somewhere? And it's, we do not allow businesses who collect money for getting the tires to come to our event.
I understand those, those are great, those are great stories, and we ought to be sensitive to those types of things when they happen, and I love that. But 1,300 vehicles, the average was 77. That seems unbelievable to me, that we had 1,300 vehicles. Average, I mean, that, something else is going on there. And then likewise, the waste event wasn't quite as, the electronic waste wasn't quite as interesting, but 139 pounds per, per vehicle average, I thought that was an interesting number. But the tires is what I'm focused on here. It seems like the tires is just, if, if we're encouraging people to store them up rather than get rid of them when they buy a tire, I mean, if your average household, how many tires do they buy in two years? It's unbelievable that somebody would have 77 tires. Anyway, it's just, I'll just reference this. We did the cleanup in Oklon, and, and we tried to do that, and it was very well-intentioned.
Mm-hmm.
Turned out, we planned on a couple of days cleanup, ended up to be about eight days, and what we thought was going to be, you know, you know, 10 dumpsters ended up being, you tell me, I forget the number, it was a huge number of dumpsters.
Well, we also had a packer truck going along the road.
Right.
Picking up material.
And then what I found out was that we were almost encouraging people to, they think, well, we're going to do this again, and so they don't have to have trash service, they'll just store their stuff up. It's actually kind of had a negative response in the community because we, we did something we thought was, you know, really nice, trying to clean the place up, but it turned out to incit, almost incentivized a bad behavior. And so it's really not the, it's not turned out the way I had hoped it would. And so I'm still struggling with what to do next on this.
Well, and I will say, we, a lot of that number you're talking about is biased to that first day where we have the governments coming in because they have more than one truck coming in with just loaded full of tires. Some of the townships have been dumped on and have 100 tires in one dump. And so, you know, we need to work on the Sheriff's Department too with, try to get back at the people who are legally dumping.
Don't have on this.
Any other questions from commissioners?
Any of our elected today?
No. Any staff? All right. You have anything else, Mr. Manager?
We're done, sir.
All right. Thank you all.